All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the City Council on Management of Emeryville Services Authority. For the roll call, I'd like it to be reflected in the minutes that pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, council member will be participating via teleconference. The teleconference location has been identified in the notice for this meeting. Following the roll call by city clerk, we're going to confirm that Christian can hear this. So let's go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Here.
And Mayor Medina.
Here. All right, Christian, you can hear us, please verbally confirm.
I can hear you, yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
Do you have a copy of the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Do you have one posted properly at your location so that the location and is this location publicly accessible?
I do, yes.
And are there any members of the public present at your location?
Just some squirrels.
Can everyone else at this meeting hear Member Pats as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. All right, we're going to go into closed -- let's report any expertise communications?
No.
Nope? Any public session on -- public comment on closed session items? Seeing none, we're going to go into closed session. Is Christian coming with us?
Do you join us there?
Hello.
Hi, Vice Mayor, we're just going to start with report out now.
Okay.
Mr. Gena, can you report out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The Emeryville City Council and the Mesa Board met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda regarding items. All of the items in Section 5.1, an update was provided. That's the conclusion of my report, thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned. We've got four minutes until our next meeting. Member Vice Mayor Pats will be participating via teleconference. The teleconference location has been identified in the notice for this meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Here.
And Mayor Medina.
Here. All right. Vice Mayor Pats, please confirm that you can hear these proceedings. And you have a copy of the agenda which is posted properly at your location?
Yes.
Is your location publicly accessible?
Yes.
And are there any members of the public there barring squirrels?
No.
Excellent. Can everyone else here, Vice Mayor Pats, just fine?
Yes.
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 All right, let's continue.
Move to approve the agenda.
I second.
We've heard a motion by Member Bowers and a second by Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Any expertise communications to report?
No, Mayor.
Other than the emails we received that are on the dais that are available to the public, no.
Same with me. Anything for you?
Same with me.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Same.
Great. All right. Public comment for consent agenda items or items not on this agenda? All right, seeing none, let's move on to action items. We've got resolution of the City Council, the City of Emeryville, appointing planning commissioners for terms commencing July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2022, and amending our roster of boards, commissions, and committee accordingly. I'm assuming there's not going to be any staff presentation on this. Do we have both of -- yes, we have both of our applicants present. So what we're going to do is each of you can come up, make a short personal statement, talk about why you are interested in serving on the city's planning commission. In your response, please include a summary of your relevant education skills, experience, including any passive involvement, then you'll answer the questions on the screen here. Okay? And then, do we need anything?
No, you're cool.
Okay, cool. And then, I think we will ask questions if we -- these will be the questions last, we'll move on to the next applicant. All right, so before we do these interviews, is there any public comment for this item? Awesome. I will ask applicant Linda Barrera to come on up then.
Hello, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Linda Barrera. I live in the bestial building across the parking lot. I've lived in Emeryville for about five years now. I moved here from Southern California to attend UC Berkeley for my undergrad where I got my bachelor's in anthropology. I then went on to get my master's degree in city planning from the University of Oregon. I currently work as a city planner for the city of Alameda, and I have been serving as the chair of the planning commission here in Emeryville. So I'm pretty familiar with the planning process on both sides of the dais. I've been a project manager for development proposals in Alameda that are somewhat similar to the ones that we see here in Emeryville. And I have firsthand experience of the level of scrutiny and review that goes into the proposals that the planning commission hears before they reach the meetings. So I have a lot of respect for the work that I've seen from the Emeryville staff. And I think that we are very fortunate to have such a diligent and detail-oriented planning staff here. And I'm interested in continuing to serve on the planning commission because I appreciate the culture that staff has cultivated here in the city, both with the commission and the community. It is one of openness and -- thank you -- and willingness to engage with the public and answer questions and offer rationale behind decisions. I'm also interested in continuing my position as commissioner because I believe that my work in Alameda as a city planner helps to -- for the city to implement their visions in the general plan and fine-tune the development proposals that we get to fit the context of the city.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question?
Should I just keep -- continue, are you guys going to?
I'll read the questions to you, and then you can respond to them. What do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
I think the role of the planning commissioner is to ensure that appropriate findings can be made for land use development entitlements and projects that we see here. To do this, the commission reviews development proposals against our general plan and design guidelines. We provide direction to applicants to achieve outstanding designs that fit the context of the city, and we also provide recommendations to the city council on land use regulated legislative issues that you end up making decisions on. The commission also listens to public testimony and applies our experience engaging in the city to ensure that we manage growth in a way that is in the best interest for the city as a whole.
Thank you. Describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years.
The general plan has 10 guiding principles that express the vision for Emeryville to develop as a diverse and livable community. It's made up of different elements, and the land use element in particular has a land use diagram that specifies the different land uses that -- and mixes that are allowed in the specific areas in the city. So the general plan is used by the commission and the council to make findings for projects to ensure that there's consistency between what we hear and the direction that the city would like to go in. I believe last month, the city council passed the first reading on an ordinance to amend the planning regulations to allow research and development in the mixed-use and residential districts in the city. And this amendment came to the planning commission, and we recommended approval from the city council. The city council, then, one of the findings that you all made was that this was consistent with the general plan, and so the -- it sounded like the first reading passed. And so this is one way that the general plan is typically used in terms of making findings for these types of regulations to pass.
Thank you. Can you give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, or the community process, and explain why?
Sure. One of the projects that I worked on when I first arrived at the commission was the Sherwin-Williams mixed-use project. It has been one of my favorite projects that I've worked on here. The commission provided direction to the applicant to create a more cohesive development. There were several different buildings on -- that made up the entire development. The developers refined the design and generated a design that both borrowed elements from the historic character of the neighborhood around here and incorporated modern designs to create a really distinctive project overall. And I think something that really helped this project achieve such an outstanding design was the participation from Park, the community group that formed in the -- they were residents from the neighborhood that provided comments to both the commission and to the developers about what their concerns were and their desires for how they would like to shape the project. And they were able to articulate their concerns and their issues to the commission and to the developers in a way that made it possible for us to incorporate some of these things into the overall project. And I think it was a really nice example of the community process going right. You know, they met with the developers, they talked to us here, we incorporated the comments, and it, I think, yielded a really interesting and dynamic project overall.
Thank you. All right. Are there any follow-up questions from the city council? Start with you, Member Bowers.
I just want to thank Commissioner Barrera as our chair for all her leadership on the planning commission, and I miss working with you on the planning commission. I look forward to moving your nomination tonight.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
So on your application, when you first came to us as an applicant, as a planning commissioner, a couple of years ago, you had talked about density in an urban setting. I was just wondering if you have any new thoughts or what your thoughts are today on density in a city like Emeryville?
Yeah, that's a good question. We are currently reviewing the proposal for the ONI residential tower and office building that's associated with the project. It has been very interesting to hear both sides of the story, you know, both sides of the support for and the resistance against density. You know, I think that it has been very important to turn back to some of these documents that we have adopted here in the city to be able to guide us in the direction that we want to go in terms of where we locate these high-density buildings, making sure that we develop a network of infrastructure and transportation options. And it starts with, you know, these visions that we have with the general plan and these policies, policy documents. And so I feel like I am in a position now, right now in the planning commission, where we are gathering a lot of information and hearing the different sides of the story to be able to, you know, make a decision eventually in the future.
Member Donahue?
I suppose a project that hasn't been negotiated always looks more complex than one that has. Would you say that that's always true, or does this ONI project seem like there's a lot more decision-making to do, or a little bit more? Do you have a perspective on that?
I think that there's a lot more decision-making to do. We've had a couple of study sessions on that project. I don't believe that it's ready for an approval anytime soon. There has been lots of things that the community has raised and a lot more fine-tuning that I think the project needs in order to integrate well with the neighborhood that it's proposed in. So yeah, I definitely think that there's more work to be done on that project.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Pats?
I'm good.
Okay. You know, you talked about the goal of the planning commission is to help implement the general plan of Emeryville as applies to projects here. Are there any local or state-level policies that you think inhibit our city's ability to fulfill its general plan?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. I think the thing that comes to mind is, you know, we talk a lot about housing affordability and making sure that we include different income levels in our, you know, residential population here in Emeryville. And I remember that the Sherwin-Williams project, when it initially came to the commission, had proposed to do 100% affordable in one of the buildings, and it increased the number of affordable units that were proposed. But with tax credit financing changing with the new Trump administration, they had to change some of the affordability in the project, and so it actually lowered the number of affordable units that were possible for the developer to actually pencil out in the project. And so that was kind of one of the things that came to mind in terms of inhibiting the city from, you know, reaching our goals of affordability and having a diverse population here.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional questions? All right, do you have any closing remarks you'd like to make?
I guess I just want to say that I think in the last three years that I've served on the commission, I have learned how to give direction that has been useful for staff and the developers. And I have strived to make our community members feel like they have a voice when they're here and tried to answer some of the questions that people have here during their public, the public hearings in my deliberations. And I've also strived to provide reasoning and rationale behind the direction that I provide, so I just want to say it would be a really great honor to be able to serve, continue to serve on the commission.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Keller. I'll have you do the same, start with a personal statement, then I'll run you through the questions.
Very good, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity this evening, and following Chair Barrera is kind of like following Steph Curry in a free throw shot. I don't believe I'll be quite as eloquent, but I am seeking a third term on our planning commission. I wish to continue the civic work I began over 10 years ago by first being involved in the general plan process, the update, the update process, then serving on the bicycle advisory committee, the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, the economic development advisory committee, and I want to help continue to shape the physical, financial, and spiritual form of our city and our region as well. I've been in Emeryville now 17 years. I've worked at UC Berkeley that entire time. I've worked in facilities management for 20 years with the city of Carmel before coming to UC Berkeley. Currently, I'm a regional asset manager. I'm in charge of 15 buildings on campus, which is kind of like the owner's representative of the buildings. I don't do any programming, but basically the physical attributes of the buildings. I manage about six of the John Galen Howard buildings, so those buildings are over 100 years old, and some of my buildings in my region are also less than 10 or 12 years old, so I have a good mix of the buildings in the campus. My experience as a regional asset manager helps me inform and influence my work on the commission, and it provides me a consistent reminder of how important planning a built environment is to our community's success. So then, I'm ready for the questions?
Yes, we are. So what do you see as the role of the planning commissioner?
The role of the planning commissioner is to uphold and adhere to the general plan when considering development projects, to help guide the process of development to the benefit of the community as well as the developer, to keep the spirit of the general plan, to be helpful in helping the developer massage and work those projects. Chair Barrera discussed, it's a give and take, and the study sessions are very, very important, and I think the community engagement is also very important. I think part of what we have to do as a planning commission is help the community understand the role of the general plan. Unfortunately, I think a lot of people come to our meetings with preconceived ideas and their own emotional desires, and they don't realize that we have this guiding document in which kind of helps us decide what is best for our community. So I think part of our role is to help the community members understand that the city has a plan, and what we do in this city is really guided by that plan. It's not just ad hoc as things come up. We decide whether we like them or not, but we are guided by our general plan.
Thank you. Can you describe your knowledge of that general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the last two years?
Well, our city's general plan is mandated by the state of California, and as I said, it's a guide to the physical development of our city. Our general plan was adopted in 2009, and it's a very large document of over 230 pages. It's had several updates during its iteration from 2009. And as Chair Barrera had said, it does have the 10 guiding principles that kind of is the starting part of our document, of which the following two are good examples of my own personal beliefs. And number one is it's to be a walkable, fine-grained city emphasizing pedestrians. And again, speaking to the people who often come to our meetings that are kind of emotional about a project, but the part of our general plan is that we are wanting to become a vibrant urban community, and I think that's a fact that's often lost, that people kind of see us as this provincial redevelopment city that came from a wasteland of, and actually just attending Robert Reyes's history meeting last night, it really told us what we came from and where we are, and it's where we've really made strides, but we are moving towards a more urban community. So these guiding principles are further advanced by the renewed bicycle pedestrian plan that we just did not too long ago, and our sustainable transportation plan, which I think we need to really start using a lot more of when we're looking at projects.
Thank you. Can you give one example that exemplifies, oh, sorry, then, your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process from economic development or housing projects in Emeryville?
There are quite a few. I did think of like the Sherwin-Williams project, I thought that was really good with a lot of community engagement. That's not a project that's yet broken ground. So for me, I think, and because maybe it's in my neighborhood, is seeing the marketplace development, the plan come together and to fruition is very exciting to me. It's such a good example of both an adaptive reuse and mixed-use development. So I think that's a really good example of what Emeryville is kind of about. It's a great gathering place for the neighbors, for visitors. I often meet neighbors just in the park, and I think that, because the project is still under massive development and hasn't really begun to finish, the park, I think, is a home run. We have done a really, really great job with the Christie Park. I didn't know we had so many kids in our neighborhood. There are actually more children in the children's park than in the dog park, which surprised me. I thought the dog park would be packed. But there are, and I hear that people from out of town come, and the thing that I think really works with that is they're now patronizing the public market. So I think it's still got a long ways to go, but I think that is a good example of what we've done. I mean, that was approved in 2008, and it even began work before that. So I think that, to me, is a really good example of what Emeryville is about.
Thank you. Follow-up questions from the city council, start with Member Bowers?
I just want to thank my former colleague on the planning commission for your application again, and there are a few people on the planning commission who put as much heart into the homework as you do, and your interest in bike pedestrian safety and how that interplays with land use is something I greatly appreciate, so thank you.
Member Martinez?
Stephen, you've been very generous with your time in talking to me about walkable, fine-grained cities, and I wanted to ask you what you think are the biggest obstacles to achieving this goal from our general plan?
Primarily, they're physical. There's the railroad tracks, there's the highway, there's our streets like Powell Street. So we have a lot of physical barriers. And unfortunately, and I think the city's done a great job just trying to get the bridge to Bay Street done, and the railroad is just intractable. They just, for some reason, want to be difficult, and it says, there's a bridge that was done up outside of Panola that crossed the freeway, the railroad tracks, and it's beautiful. It took them over 10 years to get that. So it's not just us. And then the freeway and Powell Street, that's all governed by Caltrans. So physically, we have a lot of barriers that aren't in our control. So I think we do a lot of work, good work, in what we have in our small, constrained city. When we get this bridge over to Bay Street, that's going to be a really big help. When we get the study back from TRANSFORM on how to work with Powell Street and Christie Avenue, I'm very, very hopeful that that's going to have some help in it. And I think just as we work through developments, we're going to have to be a little bit more nimble. When the ONI project looks for some bonus points, we might have to look outside our usual toolbox and see, how can you make Powell Street and Christie a lot better? And we just have, the sad thing is, is we've got this great park out in the Marina that many people don't go to because it's just too hard to get to. And that's why for years, I didn't, I still don't support the bridge at 65th Street. That's a bridge to nowhere. We need to bring the bridge to Powell Street, and we need to bring the pedestrians and the people to where the offices are and where the park is. People are not going to cross 65th, walk up a quarter mile to get out to that park. We're going to have, again, we're still going to have a park that's unused, so I'd like the city to look at, you know, we have these serious borders that we can't fix, and we need to look how we can really make the most of our money and the most of making things work for us. So, you know, and I think the bike share has really been a great success, you know, having that and having it one pod over on the west side of the railroad tracks makes it that you can use it without having to cross 65th Street necessarily. So we're doing a lot of good work, but we have a lot of physical barriers that we just really can't control.
Thank you. Member Donahue?
The general plan is starting to have some age to it. We all worked on it, and you did a lot of work on it. The state of California is realizing that greenhouse gases are a problem, and there's pressure on our built environment. There's good pressure, meaning the look of the future looks like what we're trying to become, more urban, because it's more efficient. However, the way to get there of decarbonizing our buildings is becoming more and more important. Do you see our general plan as being able to accommodate this new relatively compared to our general plan, point of view?
I do think so, because it's, it was written very well in to not put us into boxes, especially in the North Bayfront, especially with the ONI project. We didn't put limits on height. We did create some problems on the proximity of tall buildings to each other, which I think we're working on. It's come to the planning commission, and now it's in your hands again to whether we're going to change that or not. The green building things are evolving, there's more and more coming into that. We also have our climate action plan as part of, it's not the general plan, but it's a separate issue. I don't think we use that enough. I think, I think what we need to do in order to make everything work is the general plan is the foundation in kind of our guiding principles. We need to bring in the climate action plan, we need to bring in the sustainable transportation plan, we need to fully update and modernize our bike pedestrian plan. Using those in conjunction with each other, I think, it's something that we can do. What I try to remind people from the dais, when, you know, traffic is our main big word around town, and it is an issue, it's an issue the whole Bay Area, and it's never going away. But what I try to remind people is what we've done so far, what we've been able to do in our city by urbanizing it and making it more dense, is people don't realize the amount of transit, the AC transit now provides us. When I first joined the commission, we had one bus route in the city if we were lucky. We now have the F bus, which is seven days a week to the Bay, to San Francisco, that's every half hour. We have the 36, which goes up into Berkeley, we have the 29, which goes into Oakland, we have the 57, which goes into kind of the east side of Oakland. We have two or three transbay buses during the work week, and we have the double-decker buses. We're one of the first cities to get AC transit double-decker buses. So in their point of view, we must have something, but we need to get more. We have the bike share, we have, what, six, at least six pods and more, maybe seven, I think, with the new one out in the, on the east side of the, or west side of the freeway. So we're starting to see people take Emeryville serious. But the thing is, is, and I try to also remind people, is the traffic we experience in Emeryville doesn't generally generate in Emeryville. It's the people that live in Stockton and in Tracy that have to drive their single argument vehicle in order to work here because this is where the jobs are and the pay is. So what we need to do is get people to live here, and by that, we create more housing. And it's not just us, and one of the questions you had asked, and you may ask again, is what part does the state and the federal government play in this? And our state needs to step up to the plate, our legislatures need to get a lot more brave with the communities such as the North Bay and the Peninsula who aren't meeting their housing needs, and they need to start taking money from them. If you don't do what we need you to do, you don't get our money. And I don't know that the courage is there yet, but until that time, cities like Emeryville, again, we are at the doorstep of San Francisco, we are at the doorstep of the job generator of the Bay Area. We need to be also, and our job-housing balance is still out of whack, we still have a lot more jobs than we do housing, so we can handle a bit more. And it's just going to be a case of education because people are fearful of change, and especially when it impacts their day-to-day lives of getting around a city, they're going to be fearful of that, and it's our job and your job to kind of inform people how this is actually going to make things better. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
You answered a lot of questions. Vice Mayor Pats?
You know, I just want to say I support both Mr. Barrera and Mr. Keller's reappointments. I've met with Mr. Keller on multiple occasions, so I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. I had the same question, which you answered, you want the legislator to grow some teeth.
Maybe some claws.
Yeah, okay. That was my question. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We already took a public comment for it. All right, so I'll ask for nominations.
I'll make a motion to approve Linda Barrera's reappointment. I'll make a motion to approve Linda Barrera and Stephen Keller for appointment to the Planning Commission.
Second.
All right. We've had a nomination.
And I'll second that.
Too late.
You're the third.
We've got a nomination and a second from, sorry, Member Bouters and Member Martinez. And is that a motion as well? Do we need, that's, are they one and the same, nomination and a motion in this?
It was a motion.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Okay. They're both reappointed. We're going to move on to community advisory appointments. And I'll take public comment before each of these, so people can comment on each of the individual committees if they so choose. We're going to start off with the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for terms commencing July 1, 2019. So if there is anyone here who is an applicant for this committee, I'd ask you to come forward and give up to three minutes of discussion of your interest in serving on this committee and your qualifications. So I know that...
Do I just go in order?
Oh, in order who we have? Yep. Jaclyn Har actually will go first by the list. Do not think Jaclyn is here. Okay. Ms. Kane, then?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Kane, and I work in Emeryville. And I'd like to tell you why I'm excited to be considered as a representative for Emeryville's BPAC. I am passionate about building sustainable communities and am so appreciative to work in Emeryville, a city that's actively working to show leadership and investment in an economically strong, socially equitable, and environmentally sustainable future. For many years, I was a tenant liaison with the Presidio Trust, a community at the base of another bay in a national park. And I was really surprised to learn when I started working there that almost all of the tenants and residents who chose to locate there said the reason they did so was because they could bike and walk every day. A few years ago, when I began working in Emeryville, I again was surprised to find, because I didn't know Emeryville very well at the time, that, again, businesses and citizens said that they were attracted to Emeryville for the same reason. I regularly have the heads of startups and established Fortune 500 or large companies saying that they've told me that the walkability of Emeryville is a benefit in attracting and retaining their employees. Both the Presidio and the Emeryville have another thing in common. Even though you don't need to get in a car once you're here, almost everyone has to drive here in a car if they're coming from further away. It's a problem shared by many Bay Area communities. Emeryville does have a higher rate of biking and transit commuting than a lot of other communities. The modes are still much lower percent than those who drive. A 2017 SPUR report stated that 68% of Emeryville commuters drive alone. And it's 71% countywide. I think it's 58% in Oakland, which has the benefits of more BART connectivity. So we all know that getting people out of their cars is good for the planet. It's also good for people. In addition to the obvious physical health benefits, people are happiest when they don't have to commute in a car. A study of a thousand San Francisco workers found that people are happiest when they walk to work, and not surprisingly, they're least happy when they have to drive in a car. The problem is that most people don't have the luxury to bike or walk to work because of high housing costs and sprawling development. People have to go in long commutes by car. So I'm interested in being a part of BPAC to provide input and recommendations to the City Council, both on policies that will make Emeryville more bikeable and walkable, which I think that everyone's been doing a great job with. I've been to some of the meetings and seen the really detailed work they're doing on making the intersections safer and improving the bike lanes. But I also want to help advise on policies that would make it easier for people to get here without a car, such as contiguous bike routes, facilitating transit-oriented development, and creating faster, more connected transit infrastructure. I have over 20 years of land use experience, and I've worked in both the public and private sectors. I have a master's degree from Harvard in public policy with a focus on urban development. I have experience with physical planning, and I know from my years of experience working with businesses what retailers need to succeed, how businesses choose where they locate, and what it takes to develop affordable and infill housing.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay up here, though, because we might have additional questions for you. Member Bouters? Member Martinez?
I just have a clarifying question regarding your application in the ballot that's in front of me. Do you live in the city of Emeryville as well?
I don't. I live in San Francisco. I drive here every day.
Okay, so you're not technically a resident. So you're on, you're on both lists. I just wanted to check. And can you just refresh my memory? How many years have you worked in the city now?
I've worked here for three years.
Three years? Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying, any other questions from council members?
No.
Vice Mayor Pats?
No.
All right. I sit on the BPAC, so my question for you is going to be, what are your thoughts on sharrows?
Sharrows? Oh, it's complicated. I, you know, I, I am in the Mission District, and I see a lot of the changes that have been done there with regard to infrastructure. And I think it's, a lot of it is just education, helping drivers know what they need to do and how they need to react. I think what I've seen in San Francisco is that they sometimes rule the policies out without educating people about how they need to change their behavior, both the bike riders and the drivers. And I think, you know, there needs to be some sort of mechanism for educating people about how to use the new infrastructure when it's rolled out.
Thank you very much. Next up, Evan Lovett Harris. I do not see him here. He's not here. Laura McCamey?
Hi, my name is Laura McCamey. I've lived in Emeryville for about 15 years, and I've been on the BPAC, I'm not sure how long, but I think almost 10 of those years. And it's really been my honor and my pleasure to serve on the BPAC. And especially in the last couple of years, we have a wonderful committee, and I'm excited to see the interest and new applicants who are interested in the committee. I think it speaks to the importance that the role that the BPAC has grown into as Emeryville has grown. And I heard some of this in the discussion about the Planning Commission, that I've really, it's been great how Emeryville has integrated bike and ped facilities with the planning process and really made that an important part of our planning process. And I love being part of that. My qual, and I also, I work in Oakland, but I work about 30 yards from Emeryville, just over the border. So I bike around here a lot, and I walk around here a lot. I don't own a car. And I also am really involved with Bikies Bay and other bicycle advocacy groups. So I'm a little bit of an urban design bike policy nerd. And the BPAC is really fun for me. So I really, I don't know what else to say, except I really love being on the BPAC. And I've really been proud and honored to be part of what I see as some very exciting developments in Emeryville. And I'm really excited about projects that we have coming down the pike. And I think we have a lot more to do, and a lot more about bringing some of the very car-centric residents and workers in our city along with some of the developments that I actually think will be positive for everyone. One of the most exciting things that I saw recently was a study that showed that protected bike lanes reduced fatalities for all road users by 50%. So I would hope that everyone would keep that in mind when talking about the bollards on Horton Street.
Had to go there, didn't you?
I just saw a complaint on C Click Fix about it. I was like, oh, my goodness. So I think that's, that's all I have to say unless you, I'm open for questions. I'm not sure if there's anything else you want to know.
Okay, I'll turn it over for questions. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mary Tanteros?
Good evening. My name's Mary Tanteros, and I have been a resident of Emeryville for almost 30 years. I live at Watergate. And I am a registered nurse, and I am also a licensed public health nurse. So the bikeability and walkability of an urban area is very important to me in terms of the city's health. I also have, I'm a Medicare recipient, although I still do consulting work. And I have led a Medicare-sponsored project on cultural and linguistic proficiency, a national project. I still serve on the National Cultural and Diversity Council that, the, the section that is based out of UCSF. And I have previously worked with the March of Dimes to successfully secure funding for Alameda County for prenatal care. I am interested in this position because, my cane speaks for myself, I have recently lost vision and had to give out my car keys, which was fine, because when I worked in the city, I used to take the, ever since I moved to Emeryville almost 30 years ago, there has been a commuter carpool, casual carpool over at Watergate. And so I always availed myself of that, which, you know, really eliminated a lot of stress for me, not so much for the people who were driving. Now that I need to use public transportation and walk around to get to most places that I want to go to, I have come to really appreciate all of the improvements that have come into Emeryville over the last 30 years to make it a more walkable area and, and also to access public transportation. I still think there's a long way to go. I, I am still in training with the lighthouse for the blind and visually impaired. So I'm, I'm a bit of a novice at getting around without my car and with using my cane and to, for independent travel. But I listened to, I came back from the lighthouse this afternoon, and there are several of my instructors who are out of the lighthouse, who have lived in Emeryville or are aspiring to live in Emeryville, because it is a city that is accessible for people with various modifications to their abilities.
Thank you so much. Councilmembers, do we have any questions?
I have one question. Mary, thank you for being here. Your reasons for why you're not using a vehicle and your, your late-in-life adaptation to pedestrian and bicycle needs is a very important voice to me. I have a question for you, though. Do you use the Senior Center at all right now in Emeryville?
I do not.
You do not?
No.
Okay. Are you familiar with it, though?
I am familiar with it, and I'm familiar with some of the services that are available there. I actually, you know, I've signed up with Paratransit, so, you know, to get Paratransit tickets, I would need to go over there.
Are you, so you use Eight to Go right now in Emeryville?
I do not use Eight to Go. I'm training four days a week. So I'm taking the public transportation, you know, BART, to either get to Ed Roberts Campus or to get into the city to the lighthouse.
Okay.
So I use the Emery Go-Round. That's kind of my go-to, get-to. And I use it to get over to the shopping centers and, and get around.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Mary, I have a quick, quick question.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I should've.
What, for you right now, is the number one thing we could change to make it easier for you to get around Emeryville?
Oh, let's see. The number one thing is that off-ramp at I-80, which I believe other people have mentioned.
Yeah, yeah.
On Powell Street.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Very much so. It's a standing item on our Public Works agendas for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jordan Wax? Oh.
So I think it's...
Sorry, Vice Mayor Pats, did you have a question for Mary?
So, Ally, I'm having a hard time understanding you. Everybody else comes in clear, but for some reason, you're the one.
I've heard a dog whistle kind of voice. I'm sorry. Can you hear me if I slow down a little bit?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Did you have any questions for the previous speaker?
I, I have a million, because I love lighthouse, and I love the Ed Roberts, I love the Roberts Campus, because we use both of them, but they're not appropriate for this moment. So I'll just say, thank you for your application.
Okay. Jordan Wax?
City Council, people of Emeryville, I'm Jordan Wax. I've been an Emeryville resident for four years now, a little more than that. In the last several months, you have all seen me come up to this microphone on a few occasions, sometimes for more serious reasons, sometimes for less serious reasons. And I've interacted with almost all of you individually at various points, when I'm attending committee meetings or at other times. Councilmember Martinez may not remember, but when I first met her, she was serving as Mayor Martinez, and it was karaoke night at Scarlet City. And if it doesn't ring a bell, it's because at the time, I weighed about 100 pounds more than I do now. And that was more like the state of my health when I came here. And while, since I was 10 years old, I always had the idea of what made a good city was a place that you could walk out of your door and go someplace without getting in any kind of a mode of transportation. That was a good city. It wasn't until I had the experience of the mobility issues that I was having when I first came here, that I really started to become much more interested in what made a city walkable for a diverse set of people. And so that's what made me start paying a lot more attention to that and start reading more about it, be it, you know, books, blogs, articles. One of the few things I didn't do my homework on was the format of this meeting here, so I didn't really come with any prepared remarks. But one thing that I'm sure you all know about me is that I can definitely take up my time on the microphone. So I wanted to make this short and leave you with any questions that you had for me about this.
Any questions? Nothing specific.
Whereabouts do you live in Emeryville?
I live in southeast Emeryville, over in the intersection of 40th and San Pablo, a very important intersection here, major transit hub with two of the most important transit lines we've got.
Vice Mayor Pats, do you have any questions?
No, not at the time.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much, Jordan. I'll now take any public comment for, before we make nominations. Is there any public comment for this subsection of this item? Nope. All right.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just make one clarification, based on the question that was asked earlier. The regulations for the composition of this committee for the up to nine members, the two business representatives can be from bicycle pedestrian advocacy organizations representing Emeryville interests. They don't necessarily have to be in Emeryville. And then for the community members, they should be those who live or work in Emeryville.
Oh, community members is not residents. Okay. Thank you for that.
Oh.
That's, we should probably have definitions for these when we...
Yeah, if I can clarify that. So then, is Jennifer Kane not eligible as a business representative?
She is.
She's eligible as both.
Oh, as both. Okay, great. Thank you. That helps a lot.
Yes.
Okay. We see no public comment on this item. I will entertain council discussion.
Well, I think that Jennifer would be someone who would be a business representative, really. And so that leaves us with three appointments.
Yeah. I think we're spoiled for choice here. We have an excellent and diverse roster of candidates here who are coming at this from all different perspectives. Having served on the BPAC, you know, I've really gotten to know and work with several of the applicants, and I think they're doing a phenomenal job. So it's hard for me to not consider moving forward with the group of people that has already put so much dedication into this. But there's some people, I wish we almost had a bigger BPAC again, but our meetings would take five hours. Don't, Laura. No, we already go to three hours regularly. They're sorry, there was a thumb in the back of the room, Christian, indicating us to raise the number of BPAC members. Yeah. Before I make a nomination, does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make?
I would like to make a comment. We are spoiled with such great applicants, and I really hope that if anyone is not appointed to BPAC tonight, that you will consider applying to the Commission on Aging, which was, it's a robust body that has, in the past, done a lot of work on behalf of the city as an advisory body. And regardless of your age, we're doing work right now that is extremely important. We're, we're spearheading a program that's looking at the age-friendliness of a city, and that's for every age. So people pushing strollers around, people trying to get around with families, people who are trying to get to their jobs, and people who are older citizens, and what makes their lives easier. So Commission on Aging has some open positions to apply for in the future. I just want to, and those meetings do take place at the Senior Center. And for those who have trouble getting across the city, we do have the Eight to Go Shuttle, that if you reserve that ahead of time, is basically a door-to-door service to get from your home to that meeting. So just wanted to put that... So just wanted to put that plug in.
I think that is an excellent point here today. Any other comments? All right. I'm going to make a motion to nominate Jennifer Kane as the business representative, Jaclyn Har, Evan Lovett Harris, and Laura McCamey as the community members. Though it's a very tough choice for me here.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Can we call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. Yes, you may. I think you're saying what we're all thinking here.
So, Mary, I have my card up here for you, and I would really like to echo what Councilmember Martinez just said, and although I don't want to presume that the Commission on Aging is something you're interested in, I am the city's representative to the Alameda County Transportation Commission, where we work on pedestrian, bike, transit issues, paratransit issues, and also just how to integrate seniors and people with handicaps. And I would just really love the opportunity to have lunch with you and find out how to make sure you're a part of our community on a committee.
Wow.
And so if you are interested in the Commission on Aging, as Councilmember Martinez noted, there are two vacancies, and although I know the clerk is going to hate me privately when I say this, even though we would normally ask you to reapply, if you stick around for the, a couple items from now, the city clerk is not happy with me, but that's fine. I would like to appoint you tonight to it if you're interested in it, so stick around if you're interested, but if not, my card is over here for you.
And I would put that out to Mr. Wax as well, because the Commission on Aging, you don't have to be any particular age to care about aging.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to 6.2.2, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, Appointing a Business Representative and a City Labor Representative to serve on the Budget Advisory Committee for terms commencing July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2021. So we have one applicant up tonight, and that is Maru Desai.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Maru Desai. I am applying for the labor rep position on this committee, and this would be my, if appointed, would be my second term. I have worked in the City of Emeryville as senior planner for the, it'll be fifteen years in September, and I have been the president of SEIU for six years. SEIU is one of the three union organizations in the city, and I represent one of the largest one. I think it's important, and I appreciate that this committee has a labor position to begin with. It did not always, used to have that, and I appreciate that opportunity, and I think it's important for myself and other labor leaders to know, to participate and understand how the finances and the budget of the city works. So that's all I have to say at this time. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions? Vice Mayor, any questions?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Ms. Maru Desai for the Budget Advisory Committee, and thank you for all your work on it.
Second, and thank you.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion by Member Bowders and a second by Member Donahue. Just going to screen with Christian at this point. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next up, 6.2.3, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, Appointing one, two, three, four, and five people to serve on the Commission of Aging for terms commencing July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2023, and amending the roster accordingly. So, do we have Baruk Golden up here?
Yes, he is.
Coming up.
My name is Baruk Golden. I'm currently the vice chair of the Commission on Aging, and this would be a second term for me. And I appreciate the plug that Commissioner Martinez put in. We do need some more commission members, and one of the things that I'm hoping that will happen with the commission is that the commission, that we can get more members and make the commission more vibrant and more involved in the community. The aging community in Emeryville is somewhat invisible, and so we are embarking, we're beginning this five-year project to do an assessment and planning project to attend to and look at the different aspects of the city that really impact aging seniors. So, I have a background, I'm a registered nurse, I have a, most currently, a background in hospice nursing, and a background in public health. So, any questions?
Any questions up here?
No. Thank you for your service, Baruk.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Potts?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Louis Labott? Not here. Kayla Sterling, I believe we got an email from her sending her regret, she cannot attend tonight, but is very interested. So if we don't have any more applicants, any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, open to a motion?
A motion to reappoint Baruk Golden, Louis Labott, and Kayla Sterling?
Second.
Got a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Member Bowders. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. All right. 6.2.4, Resolution, City Council of the City of Emeryville, Appointing a nonprofit business representative for a term commencing immediately and ending June 30, 2020, and a resident, and two small business representatives for terms commencing July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2021, to serve on the Economic Development Advisory Committee. David Kritzberg?
Hi, my name's David Kritzberg, and I moved to Emeryville in 2010, and started a family here in 2011, and opened, started a business here in 2012, and I've served on the ECDC Committee when my daughter was attending ECDC, and the BPAC. I still run the station for Bike to Work Day on 46th and Nata Line, and I've been on the EDAC for one term. I like to rely on my previous life as an economist to help provide some useful input to the EDAC's discussions of items that come to it, as well as play a supporting role with the business networking activities that the committee helps facilitate. And I'd like to serve another term if you guys choose. Thanks.
Any questions?
I just wanted to confirm with our clerk, Mr. Kritzberg, he's one of my neighbors, so I just want to make sure that we can include him as a resident.
I'm sorry, I don't have the regulations for this one pulled up. If you give me one second, I can look at that.
Okay, sure. Because I think last time we appointed you as a small business representative, but you should qualify for both.
Pretty sure he lives here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen him.
I see Charlie every day.
Yes.
He rides right in the car.
He rides down our street and says hello to all of us.
In the meantime, could you give us some examples of how game theory might help out our city?
Like a thesis.
Game theory, nothing comes to mind, like cooperative games or non-cooperative games.
Well, it was a part of your background, you know.
Yeah, industrial organization, environment, I focused on the environment, and how people choose mountain bike trails, that was what my dissertation was about. Emeryville is a small player in a large Bay Area, you know, so we don't, the city, the city is small in terms of its population and in terms of its land area. It does kind of play a leading role, like on the policy frontier, you know? I mean, it seems like we are adding a lot of housing, adding a lot of facilities, the assisted living, or assistant, how do you say that, assistive?
I think assisted.
Assistant. So Emeryville's an interesting place to be, and it's growing quickly, changing quickly. It doesn't, the policies we take, that we engage in, don't necessarily have a big impact on the wider labor market for the whole Bay Area, but they do send a signal, you know? I think we're kind of on the leading edge in a lot of ways.
Okay. If there's any, no further questions, we can interview other candidates while we're checking the regulations on whether or not you're allowed to be a resident.
And yes, what I was told during the little break is that we just didn't have the change of address on his application, so if he is in fact a resident, he qualifies under both categories.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Next up, Brandon Pereira.
Hi, I'm Brandon Pereira. As a small business owner in the technology sector, I'm interested in joining the Economic Development Advisory Committee to help maintain the city of Emeryville's status as a cool place to start a business, a great place to start a business, and also to move an existing business. Emeryville's a very business-friendly city, and I've interfaced with many of the city's resources for small businesses while growing my own. We moved Symbio Robotics, Inc. to Emeryville in 2017. We're actually kind of across the street from Rudy's, and in the process, and we're actually in the process of moving about a mile north, kitty-cornered with Prizefighter right now. I'm pretty excited about that. Through these moves, I'm deeply familiar with the process of running a business in Emeryville. Things that we've done are applying for conditional use permits, getting construction permits, understanding the city requirements about new developments, paying city taxes, all these sorts of things. With these experiences in mind, I'm interested in surveying and gathering feedback from other small businesses in the area to, these could be technology-oriented startups or others, to make sure that their needs, plans, and goals are heard and taken into account in process and policy decisions. So, yeah, that's my application, I guess.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I just want to thank you and Symbio Robotics for hosting Manufacturing Day last year. It was awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Happy to continue doing things like that at any point. We actually just went to the STEM event down the street as well.
Right. I have a question. First of all, I appreciate that you called us a cool place to start a business. That's a status badge we should wear proudly. We're not just a good place, we're a cool place. But it seems like your second move, you're choosing specifically to stay within Emeryville city limits. Can you expand upon why?
Yeah, there's a lot of things that people from our company like about the city of Emeryville, and that I like about the city of Emeryville. One, it's very employee-friendly. Having the Emery Go Round is always great for people commuting from all places in the city, in San Francisco and the East Bay. We also enjoy seeing the taxes put to work with how quickly the streets got paved and all of that kind of stuff. That was really awesome. We, the other things that have been great are just like the process of communicating with the city with all the requirements that have been going into our new building, especially around permitting process. I really like the art installation that's required as part of doing new developments out there, all these kinds of things that just make the city of Emeryville like an awesome place to be. It's been great so far, and excited to only move a mile north to another interesting location in the city of Emeryville, even though it's not too big. There's a lot more different stuff out there.
Thanks. Any other questions? Vice Mayor Potts?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you so much, Brandon.
Thank you.
Taryn Siegel?
Good evening, council. My name is Taryn Siegel. I am the CEO and President of Double Rainbow Ice Cream. We, I recently relocated my company from San Francisco, just down the street, and this is our, it's been our first week with my whole team over here, and I just can't say enough how happy everybody is. We are a longstanding business, you know, over forty years in San Francisco, so the decision to move to Emeryville was, or just move a company in general, is a big one and a big exercise and a hard undertaking. We looked for quite a while to find a community that was welcoming. Really, that's important for me, running a business with my team and looking for places to thrive and continue to offer a community-oriented approach to everybody. So really, looking at offering that, and I look forward to contributing in that capacity. Having been rooted in the manufacturing and food space as, you know, an established business, we're connected through the industry to longstanding businesses as well as new up-and-coming businesses. So having that reach and expanding towards, you know, other segments of the population that are looking to expand their businesses or start businesses, and then keep those concepts, you know, in mind as leaders and workers, you know, contribute to their companies. So I look forward to joining the community here and being part of it and giving back to the warm welcome that we've already received in a number of ways. I think that's a huge draw to Emeryville. It was a clear factor in the decision that I made to uproot us for sort of this next phase of what we have to offer as a company.
Thank you. Any questions?
All I want to say is that anybody whose business title is Double Rainbow has my vote, so.
We look forward to adding sweetness to, you know, the picture here, so it's lots of color and fun, yeah.
Exciting. Vice Mayor Potts, any questions?
No, I'm just excited to double rainbows in Emeryville. I remember them fondly from my days, if anything.
Yeah, I mean, I don't normally ask for tours, but I want to tour the ice cream place. Just going to say it.
You're at Sherwin &amp; Horton.
Correct.
Ooh, we're very nearby.
Yes, we're neighbors, so I live next door to you, so I'm going to come over and take a tour.
Fabulous.
And we need a big double rainbow painted on that building now.
I think that's it for questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony Thomas? Seeing no Anthony Thomas, I'll ask for a public comment on this item. No public comment, I will ask for nominations now.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate David Kritzberg as the resident and Brandon Pereira and Taryn Siegel as the small business representatives to EDAC.
I'll second that.
And I'll second that.
Oh, I'll give it to Christian. Christian can second it, he's been trying all night. Member Martinez made the motion, Vice Mayor Potts finally seconded it.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye, and yeah, I want to tour both the robot place and the ice cream place, actually. This sounds like a good afternoon for me personally, so I'll be hitting you up.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
I just want to say, I'm just always impressed at the people who show up from the small business community here. I just loved having, we had two in-person applicants along with an excellent resident this evening, and it just shows how awesome a one-square-mile-city economy can be, and the people who make it great. So just thank you for your willingness to come out tonight, for making this community your home, and you are welcome here, and so thank you for being here.
All right. 6.2.5, Resolution, City of Emeryville, Appointing a community member for a term commencing immediately and ending June 30, 2020, and two community members for terms commencing July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2021, to serve on the Housing Committee. All right, I'll call up the applicants as listed here. Nicole Gruen? Nope. Chris Owens?
I'm Chris Owens. Actually, I didn't know I was going to have to come up and speak, but I have lived in Emeryville for thirty-five years, and I just want to say, I am so impressed with the applicants that you have gotten here for all these different committees. The talent and their experience is just incredible. When I moved here in 1984, I moved into Pacific Park Plaza, which was surrounded by wasteland. We couldn't get anybody to serve on anything. So I don't know if I'm even going to get reappointed here, because my talent's at this point, and I will not serve on the Aging Committee. So I knew, since I have aged here for thirty-five years, I knew you were going to probably suggest that. I am not quite there yet.
No, I know better than to do that. I've known you for quite a while.
I was actually the, one of the first people on the Housing Committee when it was established. Nobody seems to know when it was. It was in the early nineties or the late eighties, and back then...
Was it established in the sixties?
No. No, 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 it was not.
Oh, it was a planning commission?
And it was established with five residents, two city council members, and one planning commissioner. And I was serving on the planning commission at that time, and nobody else wanted to serve on the Housing Committee, so I agreed to do that. And I've served on it ever since until just the last time around when I didn't get reappointed. So what are my qualifications for being on the Housing Committee? Well, I don't, I don't really know what to say, other than that I believe in housing. I have been in the title business for forty years, so I know all about housing residential. I have been in the title business for 40 years, so I know all about housing residential. I was on the planning commission. My god, there isn't really anybody more qualified for this than I am, even though my brain is starting to deteriorate a little, so I am forgetting some of the things. But the Housing Committee is a fabulous committee, even though we don't have somebody running it right now, but I guess you all are interviewing, I hope. You know, too, for the director.
Yes, staff, yes.
Okay, so what can I say? It's in your hands.
Any question? Are we allowed to ask questions of you?
I guess trying to be funny is what one does in age, you know?
It works for you.
It does. I can't think of anything. You guys got questions?
I have comments for later.
Okay. Vice Mayor Pats, any questions?
No questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roylan Reed? Not seeing her. Whitney Rubin? Henry Simons?
Henry is great on the commission. Be sure you wait for him.
Chris, you're great, too. Hi, everybody. My name's Henry Simons. Thank you for appointing me to the Housing Commission last time, and I've really enjoyed my experience. We all know that housing is a crisis here in the Bay Area and that basically Emeryville is the solution. We're building dense housing for good people, which is essential for the planet, and we're aggressively supporting affordable housing. So if we can just make that happen in other places, the area will be in much better shape. I hope to work with my colleagues on the Housing Advisory Committee to make sure we're getting the best possible bang for a buck from our affordable housing bond, making sure we can build as much dense housing as possible, and showing cities that are a little bit more skeptical of building why they should get on board. And I'm excited to come work, continue doing this work in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Henry?
Thank you, Henry.
Yeah.
Anthony Thomas, still not here. Jordan Wax, still here.
Jordan Wax, Emeryville resident for four years. It is hard to think of an issue that elicits more passion in the Bay Area than housing, and it should, not just because housing is important to the region or the state or the country and is in a pretty bad shape, but it is actually arguably one of the most important issues in the world. And you may be asking, are you putting it on the same level as global warming? But of course, as we get reminded over and over again, housing and global warming are directly linked because global warming is caused by humans, and as long as we have humans, humans have to live somewhere. And the per capita question on environmental issues was missing for far too long in the debates, and we are only too recently coming to realize how important cities and density are to the future of our planet. We here in Emeryville and the Bay Area and in every city have to find ways to make density livable because we have to create density, we have to create places for people to live here, which are attractive and which are healthy and which are good places to live in general, so we can bring people into these environments and reduce the amount of pollution that's being caused by all of the spreading out of humanity and the reduction of green spaces that is causing an untold number of problems. But also, one of the reasons that I'm really interested in serving on this committee is when you look at all of the committees and all of the issues that come before you on city council, all of these things are obviously interlinked, but so many things come together at this nexus, right? Because density basically unlocks just about everything you could care about in a city, unless what you want to replicate in a city is a suburban experience for you while being a 10-minute drive from a bunch of nice restaurants, in which case we're probably not going to get along. But if you care about parks, I was just reading something on CityLab, a blog you may be familiar with, that asked the question, why don't more Americans use parks at night? And one of the answers was, we, you know, unlike some places where they have a lot of people living around parks where they can create these like vibrant nighttime communities around them, we just don't have enough people living around them, along with all kinds of other cultural issues. If you care about bicycle and pedestrian access, which obviously I do or I wouldn't have been standing for that committee, every single person you have living in a neighborhood makes every amenity that you create, whether it be a tree or a sidewalk or a bicycle lane, that much more valuable. Having more people living in these cities, creating greener places for them to live while creating more homes in general, is the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Nope. Okay. Thank you, Jordan. All right, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any motions?
Madam Mayor, if I may, my first foray into public service was to serve on the Emeryville Housing Committee a number of years ago, and I am pleased to serve as the liaison from the council to that committee today, and they are an excellent group of human beings who understand everything that -- you heard all of them say, they understand how this works and what the future entails. Even when Member Owens and I have disagreed epically on several items related to rents versus ownerships issues, we have always been friends, and I think her perspective is a very important one. We have six positions. We heard from three people, there's one other incumbent, Whitney Rubin. I would actually like to not fill the other two positions tonight, and I would like to make a motion only to appoint Chris Owens, Whitney Rubin, Henry Simons, and Jordan Wax to a term that ends June 30, 2021. That would be my motion.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion for Member Bouders, a second for Member Martinez, and some audience commentary.
I'm sorry.
Please call the roll.
I'm sorry for him. I said, somebody's got to nominate him to something, and give it to him.
I beg your pardon, I was paying attention to something else when you said the names. Could you repeat those?
It's okay. For a term ending June 30, 2021 only, the names would be Gisela Owens, Whitney Rubin, Henry Simons, and Jordan Wax. That's my motion.
And we had a second by...
I think Councilmember Martinez, yeah.
So you are not moving to fill the shorter...
I'm leaving the other three. The other three, I would have had questions for all of them, and neither of them appeared, so I'm not comfortable moving to approve. No, there's one for a term ending next year and one a term ending in the following term. There's six openings.
Yes, there were three other applicants.
I'm only making four nominations, and I'm leaving the other three names on the table.
Or two vacancies.
Yeah, four nominations, two open vacancies. There were three applicants, if that's the math over there. Okay.
If those applicants are interested, I'd like to interview them, so.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Okay. Next up.
Thank you all.
6.2.6, thank you. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville Appointing Two Members to Serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee for Terms Commencing July 1, 2019 and Ending June 30, 2021. Sasheen Andrig, I don't believe is...
First two gave us emails.
Yeah, I've got two emails, right, for Sasheen, Andrig, and Zoe Chaff?
Yep.
Okay, they were regretfully unable to attend tonight. Sarah Cledo.
Good evening, everybody. I'm from Portugal, but actually, I'm right now a scientist who lives and works in Emeryville, and I'm very excited for being here. I have quite a vast experience in organizing science outreach events and trying to improve local laws for the environmental protection, and I did all of this during both my academic and professional lives. I have a PhD in chemical and biological engineering, and I am applying for a position with this committee because I truly believe that I'm in a great position to leverage this great workforce that we have in Emeryville, all these biotech companies who work, who we have here. We have a great workforce, and I believe that we're not really using them enough, like we're not benefiting as much as we could from having all these workers here, and I would really like to get them more involved with our community so that we actually have these workers benefiting our community in terms of helping develop the skills, STEM skills of our children and empower the local public schools so that, you know, we can all be together and grow together. The fact that a lot of people work here but don't live here makes them really not think about the city they're in, and I think the fact that I'm both resident and I work in a biotech company, I can bring those two groups together and for the benefit of our community. And so that is why I'm applying, and I would be very excited to help bring these two groups together and help develop the community further, especially our young ones, and share my passion for science. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions? I've got a question. In your application, I didn't see too much about what do you think the parks in Emeryville could improve on? How could we improve our parks?
So, you know, it's -- we have this definition, or the public in general, I think, has a definition of parks, and I have my own definition of parks, and parks in recreation, and I think we can really have the parks aspect of it be more educational than what it is right now. I think we can leverage the beautiful spaces that we have now to pass on knowledge to the children and the parents and have both interact more with the parks, even when it comes to aspects as small as knowing the species, the name, the common name and the Latin name for a specific species that we have in our city parks. And things as simple as that but can get really kids to engage more with nature and be more aware of the importance of being respectful towards the environment. And the passion from -- my particular passion for science started with what a lot of people call the real biology, so nature, and from that then I moved on to more different aspects of it, but I think it's how you really engage children is by starting with things that are very, very physical and that they interact with easily. And that's one of the aspects that I would like to see improved in Emeryville would be to have our -- just our parks be more educational, though they are amazing. I live close to the one behind the public market, the Christie Park, and I think we can just make it a bit more educational from the biology point of view.
Thank you so much. Okay, any other questions? Nope. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. All right, any public comment on this item? All right, I do not see any, so I will open it up for council discussion. Yes, Member Donahue.
I've been the liaison to Parks and Rec, and I have to say that the two people, Andrig and Zoe, have been very good on the committee. And while Sarah has got something that I really love about our city, namely the connection to our exciting biotech sector, I just wish that I could have an open place for you because everything you say is what I would like for my city. But on the other hand, these two people who want to be reappointed have been excellent on the Parks and Rec Committee, and they both really are, you know, they have a lot of good things that they've done and would like to continue doing, so that's my feeling about it.
Thank you. Member Bouders?
I agree with Councilmember Donahue, and I want to offer, extend something. I find myself doing this tonight. I found one other business card, and here's the thing why. So I started a business roundtable, and right now it includes representatives of IKEA, Decathlon Sports, Cliff Bar, Amaris, Novartis, Griffles, and someone else, and Zimergen is not on my team here, and we are working on how to get the employers in Emeryville more engaged with environmental justice issues in Emeryville and make the community a safer and cleaner place. And there's a lot of interest, and so we're actually working on a big volunteer project for later this fall, which council hasn't heard about yet. So if you would like...
Do you want to help recycle in the schools?
If you would... I had already tagged you as someone I wanted to meet when I read all the applications, so I'm not here to predict how the vote will go, but Councilmember Donahue is the council liaison to the committee, and he knows everybody on that committee really well. So I'm just going to leave this up here. Could you pass that over to staff? I would really love to get coffee with you and talk to you no matter what because I think that there's a space for you and what you want to do in the community, and I think it'd be great.
Any other comments from council members? All right. I concur. I think we've got three great applications here. I think Sarah, perhaps your application is more suited towards other energies that we can have you work towards in our city, and I'm excited to explore that. Member Donahue, since you are the liaison to this committee, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move that we support Zoe Chaff and Andrig Sasheen.
And I'll second that.
We've got a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Vice Mayor Pats.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right. 6.2.7, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville Appointing Three People as Either Business Representatives or Residents for Terms Commencing July 1, 2019 and Ending June 30, 2021, and Appointing Two for Terms Commencing July 1, 2019 and Ending June 30, 2022 to Serve on the Public Art Committee. All right, so we've got some candidates here. Jean Goldman, not here. I don't think we have any of our candidates.
Emily McPartlin is here.
Yes, we don't have Melody here. We've got Emily here.
Yep.
Come on up.
Hello.
Hi, Emily.
My name is Emily McPartlin. I think that public art can make a public space more approachable and help start conversations. It can help us understand our culture and our history, and I believe it's invaluable. I would be honored to work with the committee and its rich history to continue to make beautiful public art and spaces here in Emeryville. A little bit about me, I've lived in the Bay Area for 12 years, and I've recently moved to Emeryville, and one of my favorite activities is walking my dog around and looking at all the public spaces. It makes it really enjoyable. I also have a background in finance. I work at the Homeless Action Center in Berkeley, where I manage our budget and our fundraising. And although it's not as flashy as the making of art, it's very important in funding it and making sure that it gets executed. So that's me.
Thank you. Any questions?
What's your favorite art piece in Emeryville?
I've really been enjoying the electrical boxes with the yellow and then the black stick figures. Also, the -- it's on Hollis on the corner where, and I don't know the artist's name, but the large spheres in the courtyard on that building on, I think it's 45th, maybe? Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, Emily.
Thanks.
Alicia's not here either. Okay, any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none. I gotta admit, I failed to disclose in ex parte communications because two months ago, on my way to Target, I was accosted by a certain member of the public, Henry here tonight, and lobbied on behalf of Emily. Who was apparently at home unplugging a drain, which he could not do. It was a good lobbying effort, truly, so.
I did fix the garbage disposal.
The garbage disposal was fixed, better than I could do.
I was not...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're okay.
I just wanted to point out, you probably noticed that you have an email from Alicia Raffel stating that she would have been here if she were not ill.
Right. Thank you. Okay. With that disclosure out of the way, do we have any nominations? Should be an easy one.
I would like to nominate four people. I'd like to nominate Emily, Alicia, Jean, and Melody.
Do you have preference for who goes? The tombs, the two...
Well, I would like for the June of 2022 for Jean Goldman and Melody Cosma Kennedy to get those dates, and Emily and Alicia to be June of '21.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Member Bouders. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Yes.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you to everyone who came here tonight and everyone who applied.
Vice Mayor Pats, we'll call you back. Vice Mayor Pats, we'll call you back.
Meeting. Before we call the roll, I would like to note that Vice Mayor Pats is participating via teleconference pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, and the teleconference location has been identified in the notice for this meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Here.
And Mayor Medina?
Here.
All right, Vice Mayor Pats, I'm going to ask you to confirm a list of things for me, that you can hear the proceedings, that you have a copy of the agenda, that you've posted the agenda properly at your location, and that your location is publicly accessible.
Yes.
Are there any members of the public at your location?
No.
Okay, can all of the council members and the public hear Vice Mayor Pats?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome, let's commence with meeting business.
Move to approve the final agenda.
I second.
Are there any ex parte communications?
Oh, no.
I'll call the roll on that vote.
Do it.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Yes.
And Mayor Medina?
Yep. Okay, public comment for consent agenda items not on this agenda, seen none, consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
Second, we've got a motion from Member Bowers, a second for myself.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Yes.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. All right, next up, this meeting is adjourned, we're going to go to the City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:17 PM. We do not need to call the roll, we are all still present. Can I get approval of the final agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Member Martinez, we've got a second from Member Donahue.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Yes.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. Any special orders of the day? Okay, any announcement of commission or committee vacancies?
Just briefly, as council knows, you made several appointments tonight to fill expired terms. We will tomorrow start a fresh 45-day notice to advertise for the vacancies that we did not fill tonight, and also to accommodate some applications that didn't make the deadline for this main appointment process.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask you a question, Madam Mayor? Are we going to contact previous applicants to the Planning Commission to alert them that there is a vacancy?
So everyone who, so we'll advertise the vacancy, and also any applications that we have on file going back a year, we also notify those folks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any councilmember special announcements or reports on meetings attended? Yes, Member Martinez?
I just want to encourage members of the public to register on PGE.com, Pacific Gas and Electric, because I'd like you to learn more about the Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program that they are now instituting. This is where they're going to, where transmission lines may be shut down in case of higher fire danger during the summer. And since the transmission line, it's transmission lines and not distribution lines, fire threats that are not directly adjacent to Emeryville can still affect our power supply. So I think it's really important that customers of PG&E, and we're all customers of PG&E, even though our power procurement goes through East Bay Community Energy, we still use our transmission lines, and we still get bills from them. It's important to go online and make sure that you're getting updates because they, according to the website, they plan to text and email and notify people as much in advance as they can if power supplies are going to be cut off. So I think this is a really important opportunity for everyone to get that notice.
Thank you.
I just have two items. I just want to thank Mayor Medina for hosting a fabulous mayor's conference meeting last week, and then I also want to thank, earlier this morning, the Emeryville Police Department participated in the law enforcement relay for, in support of the Special Olympics, and I know everyone was very busy, and so I had the privilege of joining on behalf of the council. And I want to thank Chief Tahata, I want to thank dispatcher Vanessa Maseo, Captain Oliver Collins, Sergeant Rich Lee, Officer Nick Drexler, and Detective Jaime Pardo, who all ran as part of the relay. We ran three miles through Emeryville and delivered the torch to the Cal Berkeley Police Department. I also want to thank Officer Steve Hintergard, Sergeant Andrew Casianos, Officer Michelle Seppert, who did a huge job coordinating this for us, Lieutenant Michael Allen, and PST Nate Calvin, who provided the support, and our police in, police vehicle and motorcade vehicle escort through the city of Emeryville this morning. So thank you for your work supporting the Special Olympics, and to all the members of the police department who came out.
Thank you. I'd like to mention for anyone who did not make it, we had a phenomenal Pride event hosted by Councilmember Bowers last weekend, weekend before last, on the 8th, where we hung both our Pride flag and Dublin's Pride flag, which I believe now is in Dublin. Well, we'll get an update on the next path, home of that Pride flag, and we now have our trans flag out front as well. It was a phenomenal event, attended by a lot of members of the East Bay, and also people from Dublin came all the way over here for that event, and the grilled cheese was excellent.
I am negligent in two things. One, I need to thank the members of ALCO at Station 35. I didn't even need to see you to know, I forgot, who also provided, last year you drove in front of us and we breathed all of your fumes, this year you drove behind us, so I forgot that you were there. But, thank you very much. Station 35 also provided escort, and to Mayor Medina's point, actually as a future event, anyone in the community who's interested, the flag we hung last week, as the mayor noted, in support of people all across the county who, in the region, who don't feel supported in the LGBT community, I've been invited to go join them and hang that flag at 2:00 PM on Saturday, June 22nd, in the city of Dublin at a formal ceremony at City Hall, and everyone is welcome and invited from Emeryville.
And one last announcement, catch us 2:00 PM at Temeska Park for the Dog Park Grand Reopening Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. It'll be me, it'll be Pedro.
Thursday.
On Thursday, hopefully some dogs, so it'll be on Thursday, the 20th, at 2:00 PM in the afternoon, which is a very convenient time for everyone, I'm sure. Hopefully some of you can attend. City manager's report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just following up on Councilmember Martinez's comments about PG&E, we have invited them to make a presentation at the July 9th City Council meeting regarding the Power Safety Shut-Off Program, so that's another opportunity for members of the public to get information or come and ask questions themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Ex parte communications to report? I've got nothing.
Nothing.
Anyone else? All right. Public comment for consent agenda items or items not on the agenda? I believe I have one comment card. Fran Quartel?
This is probably the only time I've been early to a city council meeting in my entire career. I'm Fran Quartel, I serve on the Business Advisory Committee, and I've lived in Emeryville a very long time. What I want to talk about tonight is the Yanni Project and the general plan, and I'm hoping that as this project moves forward, the council consider updating the general plan, particularly with regard to height limits. Some of you who are younger were particularly interesting to us when you became elected because you were thinking about issues that involve environmental sustainability, green initiatives, economic responsibility, and moving the city forward in ways that are consistent with the moral awareness of our time. And I want to make sure that the general plan, which has not been updated in a very long time, that you think about that now, and updating it particularly with regard to height limits, with regard to mass transit, and with regard to keeping the city in its peculiar, unique way, the city that brings young people to live here and stay here. So this is my focus, to ask you to consider updating the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment for consent agenda items or items not on this agenda? Okay, seen none. Do we have a motion for consent?
Oh, actually, I'd like to pull item 10.6 briefly for discussion, but otherwise I'll make a motion to approve all other items.
Can we get a second?
I second.
We've got a motion from Member Bowers for all items except for 10.6, and a second from Councilmember Donahue.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Yes.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. Okay.
Okay, for this item, I need to.
We're doing item 10.6, I don't know what's about to happen. Guest appearance.
So I, Madam Mayor, I see that we have an opportunity to review our contract with Second Sight, and I wanted to bring out from behind the closet door, the man who does all of the broadcasting for Emeryville, comes to all of our events and videos them so that they're available on YouTube for people, and I just want to ask you one very important question. What is your favorite color?
Green.
Okay, I have no more questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I've got literally no questions.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you so much, and it was fantastic to see you on the side of the dais.
He never gets out, so I figured we had him on the agenda, we need to show everybody who he is.
That's his steps for the day. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve item 10.6.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Member Bowers, we've got a second from Member Martinez, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Yes.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. All right, public hearing, first one, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville granting a waiver from the noise ordinance PG&E for work beginning on Monday, July 8th, at 2019, 6:00 PM, through Tuesday, July 9th, until 11:59 PM, to perform strength testing on a gas transition pipeline that runs under Hollis Street from the city of Oakland Boundary at the southern end to the city of Berkeley at the northern end. Presentation mode.
I would request a wave presentation. We saw this whole presentation, the only item is the hours, right?
Yeah, can I ask a clarifying question? Is the only thing that's been changed, the exact times on this, Andrew?
That is correct. We clarified the exact times and that the working before and after 6:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And PG&E is here, we can answer any other questions, but that was it. It was just to move it to today so the public had a chance to speak on it and be very clear on exactly what hours they were looking for and what specific date.
Okay, I'll second the request to wave presentation if everyone's all right with that?
Yes.
Looks like that's fine. Do we have any more information PG&E would like to give?
We've made a lot of progress.
Please use the mic.
Good evening, my name's Claudia Luna, Government Relations, PG&E. We've made a lot of progress with the strength test. We're on schedule, and all we need is the extra hours on tie-in date, so July 8th and 9th.
Okay, any clarifying questions up here before we open the public hearing?
No.
Nope, thank you so much. All right, the public hearing is open at 7:28 PM. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Nope, no one? All right, the public hearing is then closed at 7:28 PM. Do we have a motion?
Oh, wait, how about some discussion?
Oh, yeah, discuss.
Things seem to go well with the project, meaning I didn't see any traffic issues, it was flagged well, and also, just for the future, the way that they have led the asphalt up to the edge of the plate is worthy of duplicating in the future. So often, as a bicyclist, hitting a plate because the asphalt connection was poorly done is traumatic on a bicycle, but for some reason, their subcontractor is doing an excellent job with how those plates go from a safety viewpoint. So I don't know if you could specify this for the future for our city, how they're doing that.
Well, I don't know that we specified any differently. It's usually implementation, and so our inspectors out there frequently, we had to make some modifications, some of the work that was done on San Pablo, not the PG&E job, but we're out there looking for that all the time, especially when they get the gaps, those are really bad. But, no, they've been doing a good job out on the street with directing the traffic. We appreciate that.
Any other discussion? I'll note that I carried a 14-foot ladder from Councilmember Donahue's house to my own through the construction and was waved through very, very well. And back again, I caused probably some confusion that day. Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion from Member Donahue, we've got a second from Member Martinez, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye, all right. 12.1, wow, what a fun slideshow. Introduction to the First Reading of an Ordinance of the City of Emeryville, amending Section 8-24.01 of the Emeryville Municipal Code to Include Certain Demolition Waste-Containing Polychlorinated Bifinols PCBs, Sequent Determination Exempt. Go for it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you just mentioned, this is an update to the demolition ordinance. PCBs are found in building materials, and that's what this is about. And in building materials, primarily it's in the paint and the caulk. The majority of PCBs were used in transformers as an insulator, but what we find left in the buildings and the materials will be in the paint and the caulk primarily. PCBs, when they enter the environment and get into the bay, they may impact human health. Eating fish contaminated with PCBs could result in a cancer risk. Stormwater is the largest source of PCBs in the bay, and building demolition is a major source to urban stormwater. So that's the reason for wanting to try to do a better job in controlling these during demolition. The municipal regional stormwater permit is what's requiring us to make this change, all the agencies party to this, actually everywhere in the state. And what it's intended to do is we must manage the PCB-containing materials during demolition. It only applies to buildings constructed or remodeled between 1950 and 1980. It's not wood frame structures, it's not single-family residences, and it only applies if it's a complete demolition. So in Emeryville, this comes up about one building every four years. The municipal role, our role in this is, one, we have to establish a legal authority to be able to do what we're saying we want to do here in the ordinance, and what is that? It's to notify the applicants about the new PCB requirements, review those submittals, and then submit copies of those forms to the countywide stormwater program that then get compiled and sent off to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And I have one additional slide that I can put up here, and I could go through if you're further interested, but this is just really showing what the steps are in the process. And essentially what it is for the city is that when someone comes for demolition permit and it falls into that category that it, you know, is, is not a single frame structure, wood structure, and falls into the category that applies, then we have to notify them of the requirements, they're required then to sample those building materials, submit those to us, and then we send those off to the water board, like I said. They are required to meet all the regulations and do all the rest of the work that they would normally have to do in handling that hazardous material. There's no further direct regulation that the city has to do.
Okay, thank you. Any clarifying questions?
I actually do tonight. So I'm trying to understand, there's a piece of disconnect I have. So I spent some time with the EPA's guidance on this item, and the acceptable level of PCBs in water, to the point you had on the earlier slide, for fish and other wildlife that makes it hazardous if consumed by humans, is 50 parts per trillion. And this is for the deposit of materials from certain types of non-residential and non-wood frame structures into sites that are either managed or in some cases not managed by toxic substance control authorities, but it's limited to 50 parts per million. And that actually is a multiplier of about 1,000 difference. And I understand that the landfill deposit sites are not necessarily located at the water's edge, but I'm concerned that this, PCBs do seep into soil, and they, they transfer to water under the soil in the water table, and they move. That's why we remediate lots of properties in Emeryville, old factories and things. PCBs are a common toxic in our soil, and they, our proximity to the bay makes them particularly dangerous for wildlife in the estuary. So I'm just trying to figure out, and I realized that, I read all the comments that were submitted when the EPA did its guidance on this item. I went through the entire comment letters and all the responses to it, and basically I wasn't really satisfied, and this isn't on you, but I wasn't satisfied with the answers to one string of questions, which is, there were comments that the threshold wasn't appropriate and that, that the way we test materials when they're deposited at a receptacle for the receipt of them, there could be higher concentrations on some, on. on some, on large pieces of things that are deposited. We could test them in certain areas and they could fall under, but the accumulation of a large number of pieces could lead to a higher concentration when those pieces are deposited en masse. And so, we don't do a lot of buildings from Emeryville that would fall under this, I agree. But I'm just wondering, the guidance that I see that the region has under the other slide you had, that had the little, the watershed group, are we obligated to have this be at 50 parts per million, or could we have a higher threshold? That's really my only question tonight, because not, I understand that the guidance is, that's the amount that the EPA has determined, or the region has determined is safe for the depositing in these specific, I'm gonna, I want to make sure I'm telling the public the right name for these things. So the TSA-approved facilities, so they keep citing the CFR 761.61, and they keep referring to the fact that non-liquid PCB remediation can be addressed adequately, and that they keep pointing back to a regulation that was approved in December of 1994 as the existing and somewhat stagnant regulation around this. And so I'm just wondering why we can't make it 50 parts per trillion, which is consistent with water, and even though I recognize these aren't being deposited in water, if the concentrations are such that they could, I mean, is there evidence that this 50 parts per million will dilute in soil over a period of time such that by the time it reaches water, it's not at 50 parts per trillion? Because that's all the evidence that I'm missing here to feel confident that we're not potentially poisoning wildlife.
And are you looking at the Regional Water Quality Control Board NPDES permit requirements that this ordinance is mandated by, or are you looking, is that your source document?
My EPA document is the response to comments around the USWAG members 2014, the risk-based disposal approval process.
And what we're implementing is the Regional Water Quality Control Board NPDES permit, so it may take a minute for us to reconcile those two different federal and state agencies.
Right, and so I'm saying that what they're asking for, to me, is, looks like a floor, but I'm just looking at other data and evidence about longer discussions on this and seeing that it appears to me that the floor is kind of not that great when you compare it to what the actual acceptable levels are from the same regulatory agency for water, and I just feel like there's this huge disconnect between what's an acceptable deposit. And I'm not putting, it's really hard for me to put on staff, I didn't have a chance to really delve into this until the last two days, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're doing the best we can as environmental stewards on what we allow to be deposited, that's all I'm looking at.
Okay, and I'm not exactly sure where the question may be, I think I can clarify maybe a couple of things, and that might help. First, it's important to note that if they screen out and it's a non-applicable structure, that applicant itself certifies that they aren't required under this demolition program to do anything particular with that material, but just because they've screened out, building owners may still have obligations, other things. If you had, if you had 50 parts per million of PCB in the soils on a site that we were going to develop, that would have to be remediated and cleaned up.
That's in the same thing I read too, I agree with that.
But what we're talking about is something in a building product. So when it's in the caulk, for example, it's not mobile, it's not, it's not, you know, some of it leaches out, but very slowly, and the idea is if it's going to a landfill and it has the PCBs above those thresholds, then it has to go into a landfill that has the appropriate containment structures built into the landfill, that that can be in there and it remains contained within the landfill. Those really low levels that you see out in the water, that's because the fish will bioaccumulate as they, as they eat it, and they eat smaller fish, and the larger species, and you'll see on the, here like the sharks and the striped bass, ones that have a long residence time in the bay and eat food from the bay constantly, those are the ones that accumulated in their tissues, and those would be the ones you don't want to eat. The other ones that aren't in the bay as long or don't eat that same kind of food wouldn't accumulate it. So there's, what, the thresholds that you'd have are in the water, the thresholds you'd have are going into a landfill, they're different because the pathways for them to reach an exposure. And what they're trying to do here, just as one more part of it, is in the demolition to say, here's some materials, we want to make sure if it has it above that threshold, it has to go to landfill, and that gets into the state regulations of where they can take it. I don't know that the city could get into the position of being able to regulate what they could or couldn't take, you know, be-
I'm not trying to get into what they could or couldn't take, I'm just trying to, and you made a salient point, which is the containment of these sites, so I just want to be clear, like, the places they can be deposited then are places where there's no opportunity for it to leach into groundwater.
That's correct. That's what's happening here, is if they, if they reach the threshold, as it says, applicant reports the concentration and the volume, and then we send that off to the regulator so they know that there was this much more, and part of what they're trying to do is identify PCBs that have been removed from circulation, removed from the environment. And in this case, if they're part of this demolition, and now they're required to take it to an appropriate landfill, now they've gone to a place where they're remaining contained and are not being able to get into the environment.
Okay, so my last question, so that really helps me a lot, because I think for me, there was, I was missing the part where it's like, there's this standard PCB settle on the bottom of, in water at the bottom, and so bottom feeding fish, or fish that eat bottom feeding fish accumulate them, and they can't move them out of tissue, and the humans eat them, they get cancers, basically. And so, that was the part on the aquatic side of it was really clear, and then this whole new format for how to deposit this material when it's part of a demolition, it just, there was no discussion about the nexus between, when you put something into a landfill, things leach into soil, and then they make their way eventually to water, I mean, that's just a natural thing. So this is a specially contained location, is what I'm hearing you say, where when we put those things that are above that threshold into that, that space, it's designed to be protected from the water environment.
That, that's right. There's a, there's a series of different classes of landfills, class one, two, three, and each of them have a different set of standards, and so materials that could be accepted at, say, a class three landfill, regular refuse, it's, the containment of that landfill is less stringent than, say, a class one, which would be the hazardous waste, and that would be metals and toxins that would leach more in that environment, and so there's a much more stringent set of controls around the construction of those containment cells.
And my last question, Madam Mayor, is just, on the issue of the self-certification for people who claim my project is exempt from the special landfill, how do we, do they, do they do spot enforcement or spot checking of those materials when they're deposited in the non, like, approved facility? Because I say, oh, mine is 40 parts per million, so it doesn't qualify, or mine is this type of structure, even though it may have a large quantity of PCBs, the general description of my structure falls into that exempt category. If someone's just self-certifying to avoid probably fees and other things related to depositing at what I'll call the environmental site, right, how do we, how do we enforce and make sure that people don't skirt that and move to the self-certification space and then deposit? Is there anything that's mechanism that's in place for that?
The self-certification portion, I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
So the, the people who have less than 50 parts per million-
Okay.
-can deposit in a non-TSAC site.
So they've done their sampling. Well, if they take it, and then they have materials that you take it to a landfill, and they're trying to take it to a regular landfill like Altamont landfill-
Right, that's, yes, that's what I'm asking.
Where that's going to happen is at the gate, and they'll look in the truck and they check the loads, and they say, hey, you have construction debris. They may ask them for their sampling results.
Okay.
And if they're not satisfied, they see material they would consider suspect or potentially PCB-containing, or something that shouldn't be in that particular landfill, it gets screened there because they also get regulated by the state.
That's all helpful answers, thank you.
Any additional clarifying questions?
Yes, I was just wondering if, if a protocol's already been established for those buildings where, that will qualify for PCB management, so is it just that there, is it just a landfill issue, or are there actual protocols we need to develop with how they actually handle the demolition, similar to the ones that are used for lead abatement?
We, we don't regulate the actual handling of the materials. What they're doing here is using all the municipalities as basically a checkpoint, is that they have to come to us to get a building permit, a demolition permit, and that's something that's difficult to not do, which we'd notice it, we'd see it. And so what they want to do is say, okay, if you come to the city to get a demolition permit, they want us, and that's what we have to make sure, the legal authority, and then we have to make sure we have in the ordinance that we're going to require them to give us the paperwork to show that they've sampled it, if they meet one of these categories of buildings, and that would happen almost pro forma when it comes into the building department, what kind of structure are you demolishing, because we have to issue them a permit for it, so we would know. And then if we find out they, they have to sample it and we get the results, then we are required by our permit requirements to submit this information through the countywide program and on to the state, so then the state, they could go and they could check, and if they wanted to, they could spot check some of those and follow up. But that's really what it is, it's another way of capturing a potential loophole so that those materials wouldn't be demolished and then sent to somewhere where they really shouldn't have been.
Okay, I thought, just thought I read somewhere here that we needed, that we would have the ability, or we would be required to develop a protocol to manage-
Oh, well, to manage-
The PCB.
No, no, we don't have to manage the demolition beyond that.
Right.
It's just like with lead or asbestos, there's a notification requirement, but the Air District regulates the asbestos demolition, not us, but we have certain obligations to report it.
Right, thank you, that answers my question.
Very helpful.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Okay, thank you so much. Any public comment on this item?
I have one question for legal, which is, why is this listed as an action, and not a public hearing if it's an ordinance? Shouldn't it have a public hearing?
Not all ordinances are required to be introduced in a public hearing.
Okay.
If there is no public comment on this item, then I will open it up for a discussion.
I'll move to read by title only.
Second.
We've got a motion to read by title only from Member Bowers, and we've got a second from Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Yes.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending sections 8-26.01 and 8-26.03 of the Emeryville Municipal Code to include certain demolition waste containing polychlorinated bifenols PCBs, with sequo determination of exempt pursuant to sequo guidelines, sections 15061B3 and 15307.
So, point of clarification, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
The public notice for this hearing identifies it as section 8-24.01, and you just read 8.26?
About 24 on mine as well.
Our agenda is, say, 24, and you read 26?
I see. Ordinance says 26. No, the subject, and the title says 26. Section 26 is the correct section.
Yeah, the ordinance says 26.
Yeah, the agenda though says 24.
Yeah. The resolution, the ordinance, the staff report also says 26, but it was 24 on the-
26 is the correct-
So, just, just to be on the record, I just want to get confirmation from the city attorney that the way it's listed in the public agenda here is going to be legally adequate to approve that, even though it says 24?
It's a clerical error, there is, I think that, I think that it's, I think that our record can show, we can show, we can state on the record, and I will state on the record, that all of our staff reports and the ordinance itself correctly references the appropriate code section that the, that what we are talking about here is 8-26, not 8-24. So, I feel, I feel comfortable in recommending that the council can proceed tonight.
Okay, I'll move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
We've got a motion from Member Bowers, we've got a second from Member Donahue, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye, okay, thank you. 12.2, consideration of a Park and Recreation Committee recommendation for a potential park bond on the November 2019 ballot.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, Pedro Jimenez, Community Services Director. I have before you a staff report to consider a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Committee to place a park bond on the ballot at the next election. The committee met and voted 4-0 to recommend to the City Council. The overall consensus of the committee is for there to be a funding mechanism for the general plan when an opportunity comes up to purchase parks here in the city for those recommended in the general plan and the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. Tonight, we have the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Guzzini, here, if you'd like to ask some additional questions, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, I think the obvious one is, did they vote for next election or for November of this year?
At the meeting, it was the next election available.
So this is a clerical error.
So the title is incorrect, and again, the report, the body of the report says next election.
We're going to put that in the public record right now.
Yep, thank you for noting that.
Cool, okay, thank you. Would we like to, I'd like to hear from the Chair?
Um-
At the mic, please.
Questions?
No, just make a short statement.
Okay, well, basically, I think there's been a lot of discussion in the community, and it also in the recent study session that the City Council had, and in the Park and Recs meeting, that there's a need for more land, and for the, comparing where we are now with the 2011 Park and Recreation Strategic Goals, we're behind. And so our feeling is that while we don't have the redevelopment funds that we used to have, while we have the various funds from developers coming in, impact fees, don't seem to be getting us to where we can actually make a significant jump ahead, and being already behind and seeing the expansion of the city's workforce and residential population, we're going to become further behind, and as we do, the value of the land and the cost of the land we would need for a park is going up. So we're going to fall behind the curve rapidly, and so we felt like a bond measure would allow us to get ahead of the curve. And, you know, we basically have an opportunity to do something now that in the future we may not be able to do anymore. And to not do this would be kind of saying that we're going to be a very low-park city. So that's a choice that we feel is important. And we also wanted to emphasize that if we did have a bond measure, that it would make sense to try to use that for a larger project, because small, little mini parks are something that are more doable outside of that, but to do a larger project in a section of the city that doesn't have anything like that would make sense if we have an opportunity to do that.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have any clarifying questions?
One.
Yes.
Did you have a recommendation as to how much money you think the bond should be?
I don't. That's something that we've started, been talking with this, and we would really have to get staff's input on that, because it's kind of hard to figure out what would be enough to make a sizable park. I would be thinking like we would, we'd make something at least the size of Doyle Hollis or more closer to what we're seeing at Sherwin-Williams if we're able to find a plot of land that would be available for something like that, and so we would need input from staff to get ideas to what would be a reasonable amount for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further clarifying questions? All right, thank you so much. I'll now open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, any discussion? Perhaps we'll start with Member Donahue, since you're the liaison to this committee?
Well, I think what Jack said is really true, that the projection of our future residential population growing and probably our daytime population growing as well is really there, and we have in the general plan several potential large sites for parks that would be, keep our city as a livable urban place, and this would be a way to potentially purchase a single larger piece of land, or maybe several medium-sized pieces of land if we prepare now.
Thank you. Member Bowers and Martinez, I know you've done a lot of work around potential ballot measures, do you have any comments?
I'm open to referring this to the Budget and Governance Committee and talking with our consultant about how this rings with Emeryville voters. It would be good to move forward knowing with a, with a plan, because voters tend to like specific goals, so it's, that's something that I think we would need to develop pretty quickly, even though it's November 2020, I think there's a lot of work to be done on this. But I'm, I'm generally in favor of adding parks to Emeryville.
Member Bowers?
Yeah, I agree with what Councilmember Martinez just said, and the only thing I disagree with Jack on is I don't think that not doing a bond now makes us a, our vision is a very low-park oriented city, I don't agree with that actually at all. When we ran- When we ran Measure C last year, and we discussed Measure C, the initial proposal I had in the fall of 2017 was a housing and parks bond, a combination of things, because I believe livability is a combination of those things, right? You don't just build housing in, in a space and expect people to not engage their community. But, and I, one thing I do agree with you on is that the cost of buying land now is most likely going to be less than it would be in the future. And so, there is a value add into doing that. But to piggyback off of what Councilmember Martinez said, there's several things that I didn't hear the committee speak to, and maybe you discussed it, but that are flags for me at the moment. As much as I, I want to support and move forward with this, I think the timing is important in several respects. One is, we don't have, unlike the housing bond, where we have a list of items in the CIP, properties we've owned through redevelopment, where we have to actually execute on the plan for those affordable housing property sites on Christie and elsewhere, to move those projects forward, we just needed the money to do it after redevelopment went away. So, we have sites to develop with it, and we're working on the, the implementation plan, the, for Measure C. With parks, we don't have an immediate project that's a priority. And that's not to say the general plan hasn't identified future spaces, to your point. The PG&E building right over there is listed as optimally a, a park at some point in the future. The Doyle Hollis Park is, in theory, supposed to be three times its size. There are a number of places identified in the plan, but we have not gone through the steps, as to Councilmember Martinez's point, of assessing what it costs to do those things. Because last I, I heard, it's well into the tens of millions to acquire that property over there. And so, if we are going to undertake that, voters really need to understand how significant a cost that will be to acquire that. And it doesn't necessarily guarantee that we even get to acquire it, because there's no guarantee that the, the property owners are going to sell to us. Like, so, there, there are a number of complicating factors here. And what I don't want to do are a couple things. One, I don't want to increase the city's debt burden at a time when we have done a really good job consolidating, refinancing old debts that we had, to save us a lot of money. We've prepaid on unfunded liabilities and things to drive our debt service down, which gave us a better credit rating. And we're going to get rerated, I believe, when we issue the bonds in the future. And we're going to have a better assessed value and credit value as a city. And so, there, there are, there are limits to what it is we can actually finance through bonds. And I would not want to saddle the city with another bond for an unknown date in the future for a project. We really need to be able to operationalize that money within a certain window of time, to make it good, because it will then count against our ability to get other credit, to do things the city needs to do. That's the one big thing. The other thing that I think is a concern for me is that this is all discussion of infrastructure, but if you create a major park, you have the then-built-in ongoing maintenance and staffing costs. And so, that is something that, having just passed a budget, and looking at the, the horizon for our obligation to the state pension fund, based on the way that the state has reallocated the discount rate, we're looking at this like, three-to-six-year horizon of this bubble, before we kind of come over the edge of that hurdle. And so, for me, how, that has got to be a priority for us to be a solvent city in the future. And the staffing and maintenance that would go into this, and the contracts we would have to develop to pay to develop a plan for a major park, are all real costs that don't get covered by a bond. So, I'm supportive of this as a concept, for sure. And I just think that the request to put it on the next ballot, to me, is premature. But I support looking into it, and having the Budget Committee do an analysis of what are all the steps, so that we can give that back to the Parks Committee, and say, here are all the things from the financing side that have to be considered, and give you talking points for things to work through as a committee about what would we prioritize, what would, what would, where are the biggest gaps, what are the needs? Because that could help us refine for a future item, what it is we need to do. I just don't think we've taken all those action steps today.
Vice Mayor Pats?
You know, I want to echo what my colleagues have said. I think we just need a more comprehensive idea of what we want exactly, before we move forward. But I do like the idea of exploring this. We talked about this last year as a potential thing, but I think we need to identify a very clear plan as to what we want to do with the money.
I'd, I'd like to make another point.
Okay.
I, you know, it's the, if we do a bond, that doesn't mean, I mean, we can approve the idea of a tax, but we don't necessarily have to buy the bond, we can accumulate funds. We don't have to spend the bond. In other words, if we started, if we get the public to approve it, it, wouldn't it be just like a savings account, where slowly saving, we're not issuing a bond?
Well, if you, may I respond to that?
You may.
So, I want to clarify the difference between a tax and a bond. So, bond is an, is an ad valorem tax, so it's a tax on real property. And so, if we pass it, okay, it doesn't get taxed to the property owner until we go and do an issuance. And we would do one or two issuances, is the normal practice, for the bond, in order to begin collecting the tax. At that point, yes, the money that we would collect would come in annually, right, to finance the cost of the money that we got upfront when we issued the bond.
Okay, now, I understand what you're saying.
And so, if, my concern is, if there's not a project ready to go, and there's, let's say, the PG&E site was the, the goal, right, but it's going to take three to five years to negotiate a price with PG&E, as we know how that operates, right? We, if we pass a bond, then we're doing one of two things. We're either going to issue the bonds, in that case, we're taxing property owners now, for something that they aren't getting right away, which is bad practice, unless you're ready to go. That's why we haven't issued the Measure C bond yet, because we need to be ready to do the projects and get them out the door, before we put that tax onto the voter. But we know we need to do it, and we have the sites to do it, we're just developing the final plan around it. The alternative is, you could pass the bond, and do what you're doing with Measure C, and not issue the bond. But the problem is, then you're basically using up debt capacity for the city, because then we've basically said, this is an encumbrance, and a creditor will look at the city and say, that's already something voters have approved, so we have to assume that the city will issue it at some point. And that reduces our ability to get credit. If we were to have things like, we need to finance out of a disaster, or some other, some other emergent situation, or we needed to pass some sort of special measure to deal with an unforeseen circumstance, that would limit our ability to get credit to do some of those things.
Okay.
Thank you for clearing that up. I think what I'm hearing here is strongly from the Parks Committee, you guys want more parks, and we need more money to have parks, and we don't have a super-clear way of getting that money right now to build those parks. And I totally hear that. I also think, you know, Parks and Recreation had this meeting in a silo, without being present for our in-depth budget discussions, or those conversations about ballot measures, and what those exact differences are and those impacts. So, I think what we need to do is unsilo you, and have Budget and Governance work with Parks and Rec to develop a specific set of questions of what information we need from you, to have a more solid ask. And then we can consider if this should be a ballot measure in the future, if this should be a tax, if this should be a regular bond, and perhaps even, this should be a development impact fee. I think there's other financial things we could look at, that might not be necessarily increasing our debt load right now, especially in light of our CalPERS obligations. So, I think I'd love the idea, I've heard from my colleagues, of taking this to Budget and Governance Committee, and then continuing the dialogue with Parks and Recreation. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, it does for me. I support that request.
Okay.
I think Christian wants to say something.
Christian? Sorry, Vice Mayor?
Yes. I agree.
Okay. We are all in support of that idea. Do we need a motion, or is that enough direction for you? That's good. Okay, Department head reports. Nothing? Wow. Awfully quiet at 8:03. Future agenda item request from Councilmembers? No? Okay. Go home early, guys, because this next meeting's going to be really long. So, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this at 8:04, just carry over that time to July 9.